...for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the Lord is the justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, we need a motion to approve our regular agenda, please.
I would so move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. All those in favor of approving the regular agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Same drill, approval of our consent agenda and our bill list.
I would also so move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Thank you very much. We're gonna jump right into staff agenda items. City engineer Brad Resick. Brad, do you want to kind of set up the situation for us a little bit? Describe what has taken place to this point, and then I have a couple of comments, and then we'll go ahead and open up our public hearing. So Brad, you're up. Go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, thank you very much. I've got a short PowerPoint presentation that kind of introduces the project here, so it'll take me five minutes to go through real quickly. So if we could do that, then maybe I can entertain some questions from the council and the mayor, and then you can open up the public hearing.
That sounds good, Brad. Thank you.
Again, here we are for the 2019 Street Improvement Project. The public improvement hearing is tonight for the, again, 2019 Street Improvement Project. So the project area includes Gennaro Court, 96th Street North.
Brad, I'm gonna put you on hold for a second. Lisa, can we get that up on all the screens, please? Apparently, we're not feeding the PowerPoint through. Okay, Brad, are you sure you're plugged in there?
You're not.
Let's mess with that connection, make sure we're feeding it.
It's connected, yeah.
Let's just hold off till we get that.
Is that how it feeds?
Well, that has to be on. Did not know that.
There you go.
Thank you. Thanks, Lisa.
So again, the project area includes Gennaro Court North, 96th Street North, Justin Trail North, Joliet Avenue North, Jody Avenue North, Jody Avenue Court North, 103rd Street Court North, 103rd Street North, Juno Avenue North, 101st Street North, Kelman Court North, and Grenoff Avenue North. So the proposed improvements include full-depth pavement reclamation or milling. The new pavement thickness is between two and a half to three inches thick, and we would take care of some minor drainage issues that are known within the project area. Some of the major design considerations that we looked at during the feasibility stage was the past pavement performance. The existing pavement was anywhere between one to two inches thick, and it was, you know, the lifespan of that pavement was anywhere between 20 and where we are today, 30 years. So we feel good about the pavement section that we're proposing. Again, the underlying aggregate base thickness in the subgrade condition of the existing streets, I'm assuming played a large role in the length of the lifetime of those existing streets. And then we looked at the traffic volumes. Joliet Avenue being the street that gets the most traffic, sometimes by two to three times the other streets that are within the project limits. The anticipated cost and funding of the project, the feasibility report showed an estimated project cost of $1,963.373, or $373, excuse me. The funding for this roadway project will partly become, or partly from city roadway funds of $119,778, and the special assessments for this project are $1,843,595. So the estimated special assessments are governed by the City of Grants Assessment Policy. Just to go through that real briefly here, the assessment shall be allocated on a per project basis. Each buildable lot is assessed as one unit. Each buildable lot with a road frontage but with an address on a different street shall be assessed one-quarter unit. Each buildable lot with no frontage but address on the road to be improved shall be assessed as one-quarter unit, and the project is approximately 150 buildable units. Now, the next map, this map here shows you the parcels that are affected by the assessments. And this was actually mailed out to the residents with the map and the public notice hearing to each parcel. Again, the assessment, or the public notice, was advertised twice in the newspaper per Minnesota State statute. So the estimated special assessments, again, like I said, the estimated assessment for this project is $1,843,595. The project is approximately 150 buildable units. The assessments are typically advertised over a 10-year period at a rate set by council. Again, even the period is set by the council, so in past projects, we've used 10 years, but you can certainly go to a longer period, a shorter period, or whatever the council decides to do. And the assessment per buildable unit for this project is estimated at $12,817 plus interest if the amount is not paid in full. So the assessment, again, is estimated at $136 a month using the $12,817 plus a four-and-a-half percent interest is what we typically use in past projects. So just to give folks an idea what it would cost on a monthly basis. And then the project schedule, of course, we had our neighborhood meeting. The last neighborhood meeting we had, anyway, was in August. We presented the feasibility to council at last council meeting on September 3rd. Tonight, we're holding the public hearing. If we move forward from the public hearing, we would prepare the plans and specs and go off for bid in early January with the idea that construction would start in the early spring and in early summer, or late summer, with a final completion date of September with a assessment hearing of October 2020. So I guess that's all I really had to present. The next step would be to entertain any questions from the council or the mayor, or if you decide to, you could go ahead and open up the public hearing.
Okay. Let me have the clerk speak here first.
Mayor and council members, I just want to know, I've heard that the feasibility of stuff was not staff-initiated, nor was it actually council-initiated. It was initiated by the residents.
Right. Yeah, we had individual residents come forward and say it was time to get this done. Our roads are almost never initiated, just to make that point a little bit clearer, never initiated by the council. This council does not say, "We're going to do a road and then send out a notice that you're getting a bill." That's not how it works in this city. It is always initiated from the residents, and the residents come forward with those petitions and learn how to do it and get these jobs rolling, and then we determine whether or not it makes a good value for the city and the citizens and the people that have championed it to go ahead and order these or not. And that's why we're all here tonight, to figure out whether or not it's going to be a good value for your folks or not, and whether or not we should move forward. So let me call in the council. John, I'm gonna start down here. Do you have questions for Brad, or anything for Kim, or just any general concerns here before we get moving forward?
I do not.
Well, that was easy. Mr. Giefer.
I think we already talked about this much. The council tonight, I think, is here to hear from the residents, so I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Cobb.
I'm ready to hear from the public.
Okay, real good. I'm gonna tee this up a little bit. Any of you that know me know that I kind of got a thing for math. I like math. And some people want to know why the city has a road policy like this. Why do we assess 100%? What kind of craziness is this? Why do we do this? Like, this doesn't seem to make sense. Well, first of all, let's identify who the city is. If you look to your right and your left, that's the city, the residents of the city. We get no gas tax money. Every time you fill up your gas tank, we get zero. Other cities get that. Montomeda gets about a quarter million dollars a year because they're over 5,000 population. We get nothing from the state, from the federal government, nothing. Okay? So everything that we do on your roads, the plowing, the police officer that's here with us tonight, the fire department, everything that we do comes out of your property taxes, every last thing. So we are a little short. Our levy, the amount of taxes that we're taking from 1,374 households and our just over 4,000 residents this year, is $1,283,167. That's what we are taking in taxes as a city to fund everything that I have just talked about. As Brad let us know, the project is coming in at $1,963,373 for 5.1 miles. Little shortfall there, okay? We got a little bit of money that we couldn't do. Even if we took our entire budget, had no police, no fire, no plowing, no gravel, no nothing, we'd still be about, yeah, about $700,000 short if we spent our entire budget. So why are we so low taxed? Like, that might be another good question to ask. If you look at how Grant is set up in terms of the frontages that we have, I own property in other places, and the frontages are 50, 60, 70 feet in a city, right? So every 50, 60, 70 feet, you have a household, and that household pays property taxes. And that's normally enough to take care of that 50, 60, 70 feet in front of that house, whatever it may be. In Grant, we have a minimum of 300 foot of frontage. That's your minimum. You can't even build a house unless you have 300 foot of frontage, okay? So if we just do a little bit of math here, we have 69.8 miles of roads. That's the total amount of roads in Grant, just about 70. So if you do that, and you do that times 5,280, which is a mile, bear with me here for a second. 5,280, which is a mile, and then you multiply that by two because you have two sides of the frontage, okay? You come up with 737,088 lineal feet, okay? So that's what needs to be taken into the City of Grant from your property taxes. But let's go a little bit further and divide that by the number of households called out in our last census, which is 1,374 households. So we have 1,374 households. We have 737,088 lineal feet to take care of. Well, let's do a little division. That comes up to 536.45 lineal feet per household. Not 300, 536. Next time you drive by that pretty cornfield, or that lake, or something else, well, that all needs to be paved, that all needs to have police protection, and all needs to be potholed, it all needs to be taken care of. And that's 536 feet. So that's what the tax liability, if we're just to do some simple division, is in each household, okay? Now, if we were to use our entire budget, the $1,283,000, or our levy, the $1,283,167, and divide it by that 738, that gives us $1.74. That's our entire levy, everything we take from you in taxes, every last dime. That's nothing for police, anybody else. That's $1.74 per year for each lineal foot of road. It's hard to maintain a city with 70 miles of roads for $1.74 for each lineal foot of road if I took every bit of taxes from you and just applied it to the roads. Okay? My math can be checked. Feel free, everyone has a calculator out there. All the figures I just pulled are right from the city website. You can take a look at it. So that is why our road policy, over the years, has been written the way it's been written, because there was never enough ability or enough households to pull enough taxes to do these things without this assessment policy. I can't figure out any other way to do it. I can't. I wish I could, but I can't. I don't have gas tax money, I don't have federal money, I don't have state money, county gives us nothing, so that's what we deal with. So it's that home-in-the-country thing where people go, "Well, I want to live in a home-in-the-country, but I want a really nice road, too." How do we balance that up here? What do we do for you to hit that balance for you? That's the spot we find ourselves in. I want to have better roads. My wife yells at me. I don't want to pay $12,000. I live on one of these roads. I really don't, okay? But this is the situation we find ourselves in. And while I might have some other ideas on this, which maybe I'll explore, we can talk about after the public hearing, I want you to know that before you start this, this is not something where the council is, "Ah, you know, we just, we don't want to pay for it. We got all this cash out and back in our account, we just don't feel like doing it." There's no money. There's no money. Anyone can come to our budget meetings. We just had in August, September. Come. Tell us where the money is, because there isn't any there. So that's why this assessment is the way it is. What we need to do at this point is, as a community, determine whether or not we think we're getting the benefit from this assessment that we think we deserve, that we've paid low taxes throughout the years. If you compare your homeowner's taxes to a similarly priced home or similarly valued home in Montomeda, you're paying a third less than they are. Yes, you are. I've done it. I've done the math. You can all check it for yourselves. So you're paying a lot less in taxes, and that's why the assessment policy is the way it is. Now, had there been some sort of a historical change in this in the '70s or '80s where taxes have been raised and capital funds had happened, it would be a different situation. Unfortunately, I have to deal with the here and now, as does this council. And the $1,283,167 is the here and now that I deal with and that these gentlemen deal with. So with that preface, I'm gonna go ahead and open up this public hearing, or at least ask my council to open up this public hearing for me. And what I would strongly encourage people to do is this. Number one, I'd kind of like, because we have a lot of people here, and I'm sure a lot of you want to be heard, and that's great, I want to hear you. Let's try to keep our comments to two minutes if we can, okay? Let's try not to just repeat the same thing that the guy before us or the lady before us said, because once we hear it, we are listening very closely, okay? So if you're hearing the comments that you've planned to speak, already being said, perhaps you don't come up. So I'd ask us to kind of, you know, respect all of our time, not mine, but your neighbors and friends as well. So once you hear it, just kind of, you know, announce enough, and we'll go from there. Before I start, just one additional thing, so that we can get a flavor, if we don't end up hearing from every one of you because of duplicate comments, can I have all those who are here tonight to express displeasure or a no vote toward this? Can I have you raise your hands, please? Everyone who may be voting no here. Feel free, guys, I'm not gonna call you or not call you, everyone's gonna come up. Okay, so we have, and all those folks who think they may want to come up and just say yes to this. Can I see your hands, please? All right, thank you very much. Gentlemen, I'm gonna need a motion to open up a public hearing for our road improvement project.
I'd like to so move.
And I have a second. All right, I have a second. All those in favor of opening the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Again, if you'll come on up in an orderly fashion and sign in, and please stay two minutes, if you would, and I'll kind of loosely time you, and maybe I'll wave at you or something, at two minutes. And again, try not to reiterate over and over the same points, because we're listening very, very closely tonight. So ma'am, if you'd come on up and sign in for us, please, and then just give us your name, so we...
My name is Brenda DeJi.
Okay.
I'll put the address in and just, after I talk. Well, really, I just have a couple of kind of questions. I want to know, was there any possibility or any studies done to indicate whether Joliet is being used by more than the neighborhood traffic? Because I know you're having to do nine tons versus seven tons, and I was wondering if that's because maybe hauling, I mean, I live off of Jody, and I can hear a lot of traffic on there. I can't really see what kind it is, but because if we're having to accommodate for that, it might not last 30 years is my kind of concern with that, so.
Sure. The last time I remember traffic studies being done is either 2014 or 15, and I know the traffic volumes on Joliet, like I had said, are two to three times higher than the surrounding neighborhoods.
But no indication?
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm assuming that's a feeder street for everybody north of Woodland Acres or everybody east or west, right? And so for that reason, that's why we looked at using a thicker pavement section.
And there's no chance we could get Washington County to pay for part of that, because we're having to really quasi-operate as a...
Yeah, it's not a county road, so they would not participate in...
Well, we have to deal with realities of it, is, I just wanted to ask about that. One more thing. In terms of us having to pay the assessment over a long period of time and then having to pay the four-and-a-half percent interest, is there any options for us to just go ahead and pay it in bulk right up front, because we don't want to have to pay the four-and-a-half percent interest? Is there any options for that?
There is. Typically, people can pay it all up front without interest, or they can pay it over a 10-year or a 15-year period, depending on what the council decides, so.
Oh, so it is all or nothing, the...
Well, no, you could pay a portion of it if you wanted to.
So I could choose to do it all up at work front, and everybody else could do it, however they want. Okay, all right.
It's an individual choice, ma'am.
Yep, and whatever gets assessed or put on the tax roll at the county would be at that interest rate, whatever the council decides to do.
Okay, that's all that I had.
Just kind of, just, this is a listening session for us, okay? We are here to listen to you. That's it. I'm gonna talk this last time, and this is the last time I'm gonna talk, and then I'm gonna start listening, and I'm gonna be quiet. And no, it's okay. It's cool, it's fine. I'm just saying that we're here to listen, so we're probably not gonna answer any questions for you, we're gonna just listen to what we're told. But on Joliet, every time a neighborhood to the north of us gets concrete delivered, soil delivered, tile delivered, a roof delivered...
Heavy trucks coming through.
Right up Joliet.
And not just for people that live off of Joliet, but people who live...
It's a wonderful shortcut.
Do they ever reroute, if they're doing any construction on Jamica, do they ever reroute traffic through our neighborhood?
It has been done before, we have seen it before, and Joliet is a wonderful shortcut for lots of big trucks.
I know. I'm thinking we may need to consider stop signs or bumps or something to keep people from using it as a...
And again, I have to, I'm gonna say this, and then I need to be quiet, because I'm here to listen to you, I'm not here to talk. We just invested in overweight truck signs that are either our last meeting or the meeting before, so that we can start enforcing these laws much more effectively and have our officers writing tickets and pulling over some of these trucks if they're violating our laws.
Well, that would be good.
We're on it. It's just, you can't really...
Because I don't see it lasting 30 years if we're gonna really let people use it that way.
Well, it did with an inch, inch and a half on it, so with two and a half, three, yeah.
It did? Okay, well...
It's here now, so, you know, that's where you're at.
Okay, that would be great, then.
Now I'm cutting myself off. Thank you, ma'am.
Next, next.
I'm all done. Next, please.
I live on Jody Court North, and I would like to know how does this process pass the project?
As far as, so...
Are the members voting on it, or...
So right now, the way the Minnesota State statutes is written is that it's into the hands of the council at this point to determine whether the project moves forward or not.
I see.
The process of this public hearing is for you and, you know, everybody in this room to voice their opinion, one way or the other.
Gotcha.
So Jody Court North is a dead end. There's six residential units on it. It doesn't have a pothole in it, and I believe at the meeting at the church last year, there was talk about seal coating it. That would be fine, but it does not need to be repaved. And if anybody'd like to drive down there, I invite you to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Hey, Glenn.
Hey, so, Paul Larson. I also live on Jody Avenue Court North, and my opinion is the same as Denny. So this road is, it may have a few cracks in it, it might have a patch here or there, but it is perfectly fine to service the six residents that live on this road. In my opinion, it does not need to be repaved, and I don't want to pay $13,000 to $14,000 for something that isn't a good value at all for the people who live on this road. We're the only ones who drive on it. You know, maybe 15 cars a day, maybe, you know? And so I am adamantly opposed, you know, to paying for the, you know, all the other improvements. It is not a good value for those of us who live on this road. I would ask, is it a possibility? I know you can't, you're not gonna answer, but I would raise the possibility that if the six of us who live on that road, if we want to opt out of this project, I would ask that that be a possibility, because again, I reinforce that it is, it's not a good value for us, you know, to do that. If not, or if the project does go forward, I would also ask, do we really need to completely redo the base on Joliet? This road has been there for, what, 50 years, I think? You know, something like that? It's lasted this long? And I accept that living in Grant, the roads aren't gonna be perfect. I mean, if I wanted a really nice road, if I wanted curbs, sidewalks, things like this, I'd go live in Woodbury, but I don't. You know, I value other things. I value the privacy, I value the space, the quiet and things like this. And if what goes along with that are roads that are a little bit bumpy or that aren't as nice as other suburbs, that's great. It doesn't matter to me. And so I don't want that. I don't want to spend the mon, I don't want to put my money, I don't want to see other people put their money into something that I don't think is a good value at all. So I think I made my...
Thank you. Yep.
Hi there, my name is Erin Donovan, and I live at 9840 Justin Trail. And I feel like I'm a little bit late to the party on this. There was a meeting in our neighborhood at Victoria Station, I think about a year ago, with regards to getting this feasibility study for the Justin Trail Road. And the assessment information that we were provided at that time, which I understand was probably just for illustration purposes, was much different than what's being presented today. For example, the Victoria Station property, where there's a lot of damage to the road, I'm guessing because of the property being used more for commercial purposes years ago, was assessed a larger amount than it being equal per buildable lot. So I'm curious, and maybe you can speak to this, maybe you can't, why it's being allocated equally as opposed to based on the square feet?
So right now, in the feasibility report and the mock assessment, we have the Victoria Station parcel as three buildable units, as opposed to just one.
Okay, okay.
So their total liability in that case would be over, what, $36,000, correct?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay. I guess the other thing, too, I didn't recognize or realize that this project was gonna be as grand as it is today. I question whether the work that needs to be done on Joliet is the same as what needs to be done on Justin Trail. So, you know, in all fairness, if the road on Justin Trail doesn't require the same amount of effort as Joliet, then I don't think that I should be assessed the same amount as Joliet, recognizing, of course, that people use that road. I guess I just want to state my opinion that I think $13,000 is astronomical. My husband and my three young children, we've only lived here for about four years. One of the benefits of moving out to this community was the lower property taxes. I also could have moved to Woodbury, chose not to. So I guess I just, from a budget standpoint, am not prepared to make this type of additional tax payment, regardless of the fact that it might be over 15 years or 10 years. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sort of, she just sort of echoed some of the questions I had, so I won't spend a lot of time, but I got here late and couldn't get in because of capacity, but I heard a comment that everyone's being assessed on 300 and some feet of average frontage, and I'm just wondering what the, I mean, I live at the end of a cul-de-sac, and I can guarantee I have well less than 100 feet of frontage, so when someone says that's factual, in fact, it's not factual, so I'm just wondering what types of consideration go into that? Because some people have a lot of frontage, but their land's probably worth quite a bit of money, too. So from an assessment point of view, I think you should at least take some weighting factors into account, you know? And I don't have, you know, I don't have 10 acres, I have three acres, three and a half, or something like that, less than four for sure, so, anyway, just for input, you know?
You could stay there for just a second.
Yeah, sure.
Brad, can you discuss one more time? Don't touch on the 300 foot of frontage. When this gentleman's house was built, he was like I, was able to build on smaller acreage, so that's not applicable here. But talk again about how each buildable lot, lot that's built on, is charged under the state rules for that assessment.
Yeah, so the city's assessment policy is not based on a lineal foot basis, it's based on a buildable unit. And so when we looked at some of these larger parcels, they had... have to have a minimum of three hundred feet of frontage and a lot size of two and a half acres.
Yeah, in today's world.
Right.
Right. Just saying that not everyone was here yesterday.
It's not based on, but it's not based on lineal footage of frontage. It's based on a buildable unit. You could have 20 feet of-
Okay, but just note that a comment was made that everyone has three hundred fifty. That's not true.
And you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Thank you, sir.
I'm Baltra Brogren. I live on Joliet Avenue. And I have actually counted today, roughly, on how many properties are being fed that go, that pass through Joliet. It's about one-third of the residents, and that's not counting Justin. It's about two-thirds of the residents do not live on Joliet, but they use Joliet to access their properties. So, while I really sympathize with the people that don't, that have good roads, that don't want to necessarily be assessed the same, or don't want them, they still use the road that is the most used. And no, it's not 50 years old, because I was around when it was put in in the first place, about 30 years ago. I was going to lay down. I was not going to let it happen. So, I just want to make a point that everybody uses it, and it has been a beast for some time. It's ugly. It's embarrassing to have a road like that. And that's basically all I want to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Andy Haeck. I can, I live on a hundred and third Street North. And I was involved in getting the original Blacktop Project done 32 or 34 years ago, or whatever. We had gravel roads. We didn't have dust control back then. Everybody still complained about the assessment at that time, which was about forty-five hundred per lot. It was the same thing, the number of buildable lots divided by the total cost of the project. And I look at the condition of the roads today, and something has to be done. They're unsafe, and I think that's the biggest thing. If something isn't done, we're going to have accidents. We're going to have a lot of vehicle damage, et cetera, because the roads are unsafe to travel in. I own two lots. In effect, I have to pay the twelve-nine, or whatever, twice. So, it's a major investment for me. But I'm a firm believer that, for the benefit of the area and for the city, it's something that has to be done.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Scott Johnson. I live on a hundred and third Street, right across from Andy, actually. I do agree that our roads do need some work, but I drive for a living, and I've seen other roads in the other communities. And these roads aren't as bad as I see a lot of other places. It's pathetic, the way some of the roads are out there. But I don't think our roads are in the shape where they need to be totally torn up and redone. That's all I have to say.
Here, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Matt Schuler, and I live on Joliet. And I want both. I want nice roads, and I don't want to pay for it. I guess, the question I have is, is that honesty?
The question I have is that, so there's a, there is a solution here that's, we're talking about, but it's very expensive. What are the other alternatives? Is there anything else that we've looked into to provide what we're looking for at a lower cost?
You know what? I am going to, I have to jump in again, because the staff aren't going to be able to really answer some of those questions. The council, when you bring that to me, the first thing I start doing is, as soon as we're done here, I'm formulating a bunch of questions for Brad, so that we can go back and forth at the answer. Bring that question up, and then I'm writing it down, and then Brad and I are going to talk about it, okay?
Okay. So, that's my question to you. And I don't need an answer today, but, boy, it'd be nice if we had both at a lower cost, or new roads at a lower cost.
Okay. So, new roads, yes, but you're looking for better options. Is that correct, Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Dick Donahue. I live on Kelman Court in Woodland Acres. I'm in opposition to the, the plan as presented. I think it's far too expensive. I think there's some serious problems with it. I think part of the problem that arose is that we did not follow the procedure as outlined in the road policy of the city. That policy called for the citizens, at least 30 percent, to present a petition to you people. A feasibility study is supposed to be done. That was done. And then, the citizens are supposed to vote. There's never been a vote. Also, that feasibility study, the one that was presented to us, selected the most expensive option for Joliet, and the second most expensive option for all the other streets. So, we were never presented with a choice. There was a third option, which was much cheaper, almost half the price of the full reconstruction. And it seems to me that that's what should be considered. And maybe we should go back to the citizens and find out, you know, maybe they would prefer the last option, the cheaper option. So, that's what I would recommend. And that, and I think the problem we have is that we didn't follow the procedure in having the citizens vote again on this. There's also, there's been no discussion what roads were selected. I noticed in the map, if you look up there, you can see the part of Victoria Station is being excluded. Now, I don't know what that would affect on the assessment, but we're not including all of Victoria Station. Also, it's sort of interesting, we're also not including the street, a hundred, what is that, Keswick? The last hundred feet or so of Keswick, which is also part of Woodland Acres. The road is paved, goes a little bit around that corner. That's not being included. So, I think there's some problems here. That's why I'm in opposition. I think we should get the community back together again, look at the various options, find out what it's going to cost. Because frankly, I don't think that a twelve or thirteen thousand dollar assessment is going to improve our properties. I think it's a real problem. So, I think we need more study, more community input, and let's get something that really makes sense, and we'll end up with roads that would work.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, feel free. Want to hear from you? Jump up.
Ron Vasco. I'm on a hundred and first Street. I had a couple of questions for Brad. Did you ever look into Woodland Acres Park? Was that considered a lot?
So, right now, we are considering a buildable unit, just because it meets the minimum criteria of two and a half acres and the three hundred foot of frontage. But as we get closer, if we do move forward, we certainly would look at some of those areas potentially differently. But for now, we have that in, as one buildable unit.
Okay. Was one fifty just a ballpark number? Because I count one forty-five.
Um, well, some of the, some of the parcels have more than one buildable unit. Victoria Station, for example, there's three there. And so, if you count up some of the other parcels that have more than one buildable unit, it's roughly over one fifty. I-
Are they part of the numbered ones, though, or?
They are. But each parcel is giving one number. It's not necessarily the number of buildable units. So, Victoria Station doesn't have three numbers relating to the number of buildable units. Each parcel has a number. So, if you were to look in the feasibility report, it breaks down which parcels are more than one buildable unit. Or in the case of the property, I think at the corner of Keswick and a hundred and-
First.
Hundred and first, I think that's the quarter buildable unit, because we're not looking at Keswick Avenue.
Because their asphalt goes past their driveway. Okay.
But I think they're addressed off of Keswick, or their driveway comes off of Keswick. I'm not sure which, but-
And then I was going to ask you, too, if this does go forward, do all the bids, and I take it there's going to be three, four, that all becomes public? So, we all get to see?
Yeah. So, you've got to remember about the assessments, too, that those are just based on estimates that we have in the feasibility report. At the, at the end of the day, the council will take a look at, or will take the total costs of the engineering, the construction, any costs for financing, and wrap that into a final amount to, you know, divide up into the buildable units. So, as I've told folks many times, I try to be conservative with my estimates for, or during the feasibility report. And so, I feel like my number is higher than what the actual assessment will be when we get to the point, if we do get to the point of an assessment hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council members, I will take this time to note that the city did receive from various residents in the project area that will be made part of the public record. There were eight oppositions from eight different property owners for this project, and there was one property owner out on Jody Avenue that was in favor of this project. Again, this will be made part of the public record during the public hearing portion of minutes.
Excellent. Thank you. Ma'am?
I have another question. Okay. I wanted to know, now that we've done a feasibility study, does that introduce any extra liability to the city if we don't fix the roads, if they've been determined not to be safe as they are? So, I mean, is that putting extra on us to make sure that we, and I'm not complaining about it, I just want to, I like to weigh everything out, and I want to know if we now have extra liability, that somebody could say, oh, well, you've determined that the roads weren't feasible, and yet you didn't, weren't, they were substandard, and you didn't fix them, or you didn't fix them up to what your study indicated you should fix them up to. So, somebody gets in an accident, and they sue the city.
Yep. And, and you know what? You make me keep breaking my rules, because I'm going to have to-
I'll think hard for the next one, too.
You're good at this. A feasibility study is just what it says it is. It doesn't say that the road is unsafe. It doesn't say that the road is not feasible for travel.
Okay.
It says that, here are the conditions of the road. We've cored this road. This is how we can fix this road, repair this road. In terms of, in terms of liability, I guess from my, just mayor's common sense perspective, those roads are plenty safe. Just depends on how fast you want to go on those roads.
Well, if you go according to the speed limit.
Well, I'll tell you what. If you're willing to bring down a speed limit, it's always a suggested speed. When there's a blizzard, if you're doing the speed limit, hmm, the policeman probably is going to look kindly at that, okay? So, if the conditions do not warrant the speed posted, you're going to slow down in order so that you are a safe motorist.
So, what it boils down to is no extra liability?
No. What I'm going to do is, now I'm going to turn over to our lawyer and have him give you the legal answer to that. Dave, did you hear that? Do we have any additional liability if this road is not fixed right away?
Well, no. And I, the answer is correct. The feasibility study just outlines the potential feasibility of the, of the project, not-
Okay.
Not characterize or convey a sense of-
That's what it boils down to. Okay.
Thank you, though.
So, John Evans from a hundred and third Street North in Woodland Acres. So, it seems like we're hearing a lot of people that are not in favor of it. I'd like just to be here and say, I am in favor. I'm very pleased we've got to this point. It's taken a long time, I believe. I've been here 22 years, and it's been a long time getting to this point, at least have the discussion. I understand there are different views, and it's good. That's what we're about, right? To listen to the different views. I hope we can find a way of fixing these roads. I'm very much in, and this part, that they're getting to the point of being unsafe. We don't all have a Jeep or an SUV to come down Joliet, and Joliet is certainly by far the worst. I hope people don't get very parochial and say, I'm all right, Jack, and mind you, and say, my road is fine. I'm not prepared to put something into Joliet and the roads that we all use, because it is a community, and we all need to pay for that community, as you very well said, we're part of the city. So, I hope we can find a way and find a compromise as to make something work here and improve our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Lawrence. I live on a hundred and third Street North as well. I just have a couple of questions, excuse me, with regards to the buildable lots. And I think I've mentioned this to you, Brad, a couple of times. Woodland Acres owns a, a property identified, I think, as number one thirty-seven on the blue map.
It's really hard to read here. Sorry.
Yes, one of those up there.
Yeah.
I think it is one thirty-seven. Now, that's, it's our park, and the association owns that. And so, I will be interested to see how the city deals with that chunk of road. Now, there are other residents that live on the periphery of that, and so perhaps that's how that gets paid for. There's also a property on a hundred and first Street, kind of between, or just to the, just to the east of, I can't even think of the name of the road, but that the city owns. It's right, right on the north side of a hundred and first. And so, I'm kind of curious how, how the, how that property is handled as well. I think it also is on your list with a number. So, those are a couple of properties, you know, I'm curious about how that adds into the total, because that will obviously affect the assessment we're all given. And then, lastly, I think that there's, you know, there's a couple of properties that, on Joliet, that are pretty darn huge in terms of acreage. Again, you can kind of see them. They're on the east side of Joliet, and I'm, I guess those folks probably have, yeah, I don't know if that's any better, but-
It's as big as I got.
Again, kind of the same question.
We know the ones you're talking about.
Yeah, okay. So, those guys, you know, maybe they're assessed at, you know, three buildable units, or whatever, like Joliet, and, or like the Justin Trail, or Victoria Station. That's what I'm after. And I've got to believe those folks won't be real charmed. They're not, I don't think they're subdivided to buildable lots. They're just one giant parcel. So, that, another, you know, consideration, I guess, for those folks. So, those are effectively just my comments. And I guess, in the process of, if this thing goes forward, in some form or another, maybe not the overlay, maybe, you know, different plan for the actual work, but how, at what point does the total number get kind of figured out and carved, factored in to the total? It's still fuzzy to me where, where that happens. Because right now, it's not like-
Yep. So, to answer the question about the city property, the city property is all exempt. And so, if we do have some parcels that are already, are in that colored area that are city properties, they would be pulled out. And so, we would have to readjust based on removing that parcel as a buildable unit. And so we would have to readjust based on removing that parcel as a buildable unit. We did look at with city staff, some of the larger parcels. And again, um, mostly we looked at either whether they had 300, you know, a minimum 300 feet of frontage or the minimum two and a half acres. So I know we have more than just the Victoria Station parcel in here that's more than one buildable unit. I don't have the list with me, but, um, I certainly, you know, we could look at the feasibility report later. So, uh, you know, there are gonna be some slight adjustments to the final, um, map for the buildable units. And so what happens is, is once we have all the known costs for the project, and we revisit and city staff has confirmed the, the total number of buildable units, at the time of the, or prior to the assessment hearing, 30 days prior to that assessment hearing, we'll send out a notice of the final actual assessments for each, uh, buildable unit to each taxpayer or homeowner or property owner. So there will be some adjustments. That will happen between, say, the feasibility report up into that, um, the final assessment that's mailed out to the folks. And then we have a assessment hearing. Like I said, typically at the end of the project, when all the known costs are known.
Is that a public hearing somewhere?
It is. It's a public hearing that is required by state statute.
So that, at the conclusion of that, then the council would, uh, agree that the number that was, had come up with was.
Yeah, so at that, that hearing, people have the right to come in and contest their assessments.
Okay.
So.
And then at that point, the council would make a decision to move forward with those assessments. I know, you broke my rule too. You guys are good. You guys are good, thank you. All right, do we have anyone else out here that would like to talk to us about things that we don't know about yet on this? Do you have a new point for us?
Mayor, I'm sorry, just have one comment.
Please, go ahead.
I live on Justin Trail. You asked a great question in the beginning. Would I vote for this or against it? I don't feel like I have enough information to make a good vote one way or another from what I've either seen previous or what I saw tonight.
Now I need to ask you a question. Have you been to any of the neighborhood meetings that were held by our engineer and our clerk?
Yep, I was.
Okay, you were at those, but you don't feel as though there's been enough information presented at this point?
Right, so one of the options Brad considered, you know, if I picked a different mix of roads, would the estimate be different? You know, if Brad, if you said, well, we're not gonna take this road, exclude that, add some others with the estimate. It's all that kinda detail.
Gotcha.
So I've seen some of this, but I don't feel prepared to raise my hand or not.
And I'm not speaking to you, I'm speaking to everyone here, including my city council up here. Uh, there are definitely some points that have been made by, amongst them, Mr. Schuler, Mr. Donahue, and yourself in terms of options. That I will be exploring when we close this public hearing.
I'm Adam Walsh, I live on 101st Street North. Um, I don't wanna pay for it either, but, um, I would say I plan on be, that's why I moved out here, right? But I plan on being here a long time. And I know that roads are gonna have to be dealt with at some point. It will have to be dealt with at some point, whether we like it or not. And I guarantee you this, it will be more expensive. It will never be cheaper than this. And actually, now's kind of a nice time because gas is kinda low. But I had a question. How does this go out to bid then? Like, what's that process look like?
So, um, we would advertise it. Uh, we're required to go out for bid for any project that's over $100,000. So we would advertise it for 21 days. We would receive bids from potential contractors.
Okay.
And then typically it's the lowest bidder.
Yeah.
That would be brought back to recommendation to the council to make award.
So I have one question about that. So I work in construction and I, I, I worked for a company that owns a company that does this, actually. So could I, like, receive the bid package and see, you know, see if we could get a good deal? You know what I mean?
Not ahead of the.
Not ahead of it. But when the time goes out, when I'd be able to get the bid package.
Well, so it'd be publicly advertised, right?
Yeah.
But you could get it.
Typically, we would put in the local newspaper and we would put on Quest. I'm sure you're familiar with Quest. And so it'll be out there for the contractors to.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, at least have a look at it, you know? And, and it maybe wouldn't be something that they wanna do for whatever reason, but they'd say, this looks good or whatever.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be out there for all the contractors. We want many contractors.
Hang on one second. Hang on, hang on. Before we go back again, I got surprised before. Let me see if there's any new folks first, okay?
I just have a super easy question.
Okay, go ahead.
Hang in there, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm trying.
I, I just wanna clarify, um, so if I'm assessed, we'll just use around number 12 grand, 13 grand, whatever. Pick your number. Is it true, and maybe this is a question for the attorney, is it true that then the value to my property needs to be commensurate with that assessment amount? Is that?
Do you wanna speak to that, please?
If I could, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's my, that's my question.
The test for it is not that it be commensurate, but that the amount of the assessment not exceed the value of the increase in your property. So those are different things. In other words, the city doesn't have to show, for example, that you got $12,000 worth of value. But it, um, would be an important inquiry as part of this to know that you got at least $12,000 in increased value.
Would my tax value go up potentially by now?
Uh, in general, the county assessor, and I defer to the administrator, in general, the county assessor would not monitor that type of change. The installation, for example, of sewer and water would trigger county assessor activity, but not paving.
That's right. And I'm gonna turn to our clerk real quick on, on both that. And you had your hand up and I wanted to hear what you had to say and I missed you.
Mayor and council members, I just wanted to note, when, when the resident was asking about the bid process, again, as the city engineer said, that is all public. It is advertised. I wanted to note that the bid opening is also advertised and that also is public. The more bids, the better.
Yeah. Yeah, if someone can get us a deal, we wanna hear from them or we know where you live. Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Go ahead, sir.
Um, I, I had a question.
Your name, please?
Jeff. I'm on 101st Street.
101st. Jeff, what's your last name?
Ball.
Okay.
Um, my, my question is, so after this goes forward and we, you know, make the investment in new roads, do we have enough tax revenue and, um, support to seal coat the roads every year? Make sure that they stay in good condition?
I would ask the engineer to, to talk about that. He gave me a very detailed, uh, cost breakdown of exactly what you just asked me and how much that costs on a yearly basis today. That was one of my questions, as well as another residence question. Brad, if you can do any of that by memory, I'd sure appreciate it. I know I'm asking a lot here.
So the last two projects that we've done, 65th Street and Keswick, we have crack sealed these brand new streets within the first two years. And so I, I think the city's budget for road maintenance, not road reconstruction, but road maintenance, whether it's, uh, seal coating or patching or potholing, is about $265,000 that the city has allocated for street maintenance. And so if you break that down into miles per paved road, and there's roughly 33 miles of paved roads, it comes out to be around $8,000 per mile. And so there is enough money in the city's reserves or a city's budget for roads to maintain these brand new roads, um, going forward. And so the commitment, I think, has already been expressed by the council and, and staff to maintain these roads. Now, the, the first two important, um, maintenance items would be to do the crack repairs, you know, within the first two years. That's typically when you start seeing cracks. The seal coat would probably come in year five or six. And so you'll see multiple, and at $8,000 would cover these costs. So I believe the city's prepared and, and, um, you know, on board with maintaining these brand new roads. So they will last 45 years or 35 years.
And let me ask you this question. The 263,000, I think you just said that we allocate yearly or have, that's been our habit, right around there. A lot of that is actually the special road projects money, isn't it? And those special road projects will actually drop and will have actually more of that money available for maintenance. Because we were doing all these special road projects where we'd have a, the, the end of, the end of Joliet sinking into a mud hole. We had to do that, I think we spent 40 grand on that this year, okay? Those things aren't gonna be happening, so we're gonna be able to put more into maintenance. So, great question, sorry. Wasn't supposed to talk. Can't help it. All right, anything new for us, please? Anyone come up and tell us something new? Yes or no, or tell us what you think? Otherwise, we're gonna go ahead and close down this public hearing and we're gonna start discussing this up here. Going once, going twice, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Don't move.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of closing the public hearing and moving into discussion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Thank you very much. All right, I have taken a lot of notes. There are a lot of issues that have been brought up that are my issues. And this is not, I wanna be very clear here when I start going into some of this stuff, but my, my colleagues are gonna go first. But when I get into some of this stuff, this is not a reflection on the feasibility study because it was incredibly professional. It told us exactly what we needed to know in terms of the condition of these roads. The options that we were given were professional engineers' options from the largest civil engineering company in Minnesota that I'm aware of, WSB. They know exactly what they're doing. And I respect our engineering staff, I respect WSB. And their job has always been to recommend to us solutions that are gonna last the longest and are gonna be the most cost effective. Now, for individual residents who have come up and said things like, I like new roads, but I'm looking for cheaper options. I'm looking to do things maybe a little bit differently to save some money. There's nothing wrong with asking those questions. There's nothing wrong with exploring those things. We all know that Joliet gets a massive amount of truck traffic. I mean, it's not up for argument. Every truck that goes north and south in that corridor of our city is on Joliet. This is just, I, I live on Joliet, I hear it, I see it. That happens. But we also know that Joliet, from the feasibility report, had about an inch and a half of, uh, of asphalt on it. We're talking about almost doubling that. Joliet lasted a good 25 years and perfect serviceability, as far as I can tell. I've been here for a dozen years. So, huh, maybe options are the way to go. I can't remember. 12 years, 11 years? I can't remember. Anyway, um, so, I, I just wanna get that out there. Now I'm gonna turn down to the end of the table. I think it's probably best to just start down at the end. I'm sure John has some thoughts on what he's heard tonight. And he would like to talk about those, perhaps ask some questions of professionals as well. John?
Thank you. You know, when, and I took a lot of notes as well and, and hearing, first of all, about, um, Jody Court North and the six residents that I believe I heard that may not even want it. You know, for, for them and for how many cars that go down there. You know, these are the things we have to talk about. And, and is it really, is it really feasible to do something for something that is, that is, maybe the residents really don't see a need for it? And then also looking at, you know, we're not gonna know the number until we're done. And everybody wants to know the number. And so it's just the way life is, is that we aren't gonna know an exact number until it's done. We have a lot of people that say that we'd love to see it done. And almost an equal number would say that, you know, I don't think it makes sense for me to pay that right now. Maybe I can't afford it right now. So we have a, we have a mix here. And, you know, as far as, from what I see, I hate to say the word, um, less expensive options for paving. That's what I've heard a lot as well. So as much as I, you know, know that, like Jeff was saying, it's a very, very well-respected engineering feasibility that you've done. And I read the whole thing when you sent it out and it was very, very, I mean, it's a good job. But I don't think, um, well, I do think that we might have to try to do something a little different from what I'm hearing as far as maybe some less expensive options that may last, you know, 25 years. And maybe it's not a nine-ton road, maybe it's a, maybe not even a seven-ton road, maybe it's a five-ton. I don't know. I don't know what the options are. But I'm hearing a lot of that. And I think a lot of pushback is around the number. And I know that people just, um, you know, it's, it's, it's money. And everybody likes to keep their money to themselves and buy the things that they want, as opposed to maybe, um, a road. So that's, that's the notes I took, that's what I have. That's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna hold back on that. Jeff, Mr. Giefer.
So it seems like a lot of the comments that we're against were people thinking it's too expensive or far too expensive. And I know that Brad's goal in putting this together was to provide the most value for the, for the project. And, um, I, I assume he explained the purposes of combining the several smaller projects into one project. But Brad, if you could just speak a little bit to the folks here about, um, how you planned this project to reduce the overall, um, cost and a little bit maybe more, how much more expensive would be to repair these roads down line if we don't do it? Just so people can get some context of what expensive really means?
Sure, typically, um, just in general, larger projects are gonna see economies of scale between 15 to 20% in savings of a much smaller project.
And was this explained when you met with the, the residents?
It was. We've talked about it.
Okay. And then as far as like the concerns about options that we talked about, did you, when you presented this to the, um, neighborhood discussions, did you talk through about the different options that were considered and talked about and, and why you were recommending this, um, the particulars of this project as you did?
We, we, we did at the neighborhood meetings. I went through each option that's in the feasibility report. And the one option we really, we, we touched on, but we never, never really talked about is, you know, the most expensive option of doing a, a, a typical, uh, urban street where you would see a three and a half inch patunus layer over the top of, you know, eight inches is typically what you would see on newer streets with, you know, within the surrounding, uh, communities. And, and that never, um, seemed feasible to me because of, of the cost, right? And so we came to the point of, of narrowing down, you know, looking at the existing pavement thicknesses, understanding that those pavement thicknesses were probably light for what they should have been. And understanding the underlying Class 5, the gravel and the subsoil conditions were supporting a road that had lasted 20 years, for sure. You know, it's only been maybe the last 10 years where the road really started to deteriorate to the point where, you know, it's, it's not maintainable without patching. And so we felt that, you know, if we could get 20 years out of an inch and a half, we could certainly get that at least out of a two and a half inch patunus by, but also adding value to that street. And, and, um, you know, a lot of these roads are in such bad shape that doing a surface overlay, the option three, is really not an option. Because you would end up having to take out, you know, chop up those roads. If you wanted to try to save the areas that were somewhat decent, If you wanted to try to save the areas that were somewhat decent, it wouldn't be cost-effective to go out and chop up those roads, patch them back in, and then have to put an overlay. The, the streets that we put the overlays on are streets that are still intact, structurally. Streets like these, I wouldn't recommend doing an overlay, even though it's the cheapest option. And the council certainly could go that way, if you decide that's, that's, you know, what you wanted to do, you could certainly recommend going with the overlay option, but I wouldn't recommend it personally. I just don't think it's the right way to go for these streets. And that's why we chose the mail-in overlay and the, the reclamation.
Okay. And the other question I had was, some people said they didn't have a vote. Can you explain how you polled the citizens and the results of that?
Yeah, so that's, that's a difficult thing, because, you know, I think there was a lot of misunderstanding about the second vote. And the second vote is really this public hearing. And I tried to explain that to people. The only way to get this process moving was to start the feasibility report. You know, everybody wanted to understand the cost. Well, the only way to understand the cost is to do the feasibility report. And so, what we tried to explain to folks is that this has to go through the, you know, because it's an assessment, it has to go through the state statute 429 process, and the only opportunity that you would have to express your opinions would be at the public hearing. I don't know a mechanism that would allow us to take a vote, right? If we could send out a survey or something to all the residents within each street to take a vote, I don't know how that would happen. And, and this is, so this is the mechanism. The public hearing is that mechanism that we're using as part of the process. And so, there isn't really a, a good mechanism other than this public hearing, I guess.
I'm going to stop you for a second. Kim?
Mayor and council members, I will just add to that, there was mis, there was miscommunications from the beginning when you asked the people in the audience just to let you know if you, you used the term "vote." I cringed. It's not a vote, they're not voting. The public hearing and feedback to the council is what we're doing here, and you're going to take that feedback and make your decision. That's why a public hearing is required. The second thing, we did send out surveys, and we had twelve residents respond to that survey.
Thank you for the clarification, and I'm surprised you didn't throw something at me. I saw you, I saw you cringe over there when I said that, thought I was in trouble.
So, the survey that...
Hang, hang on, let, let the staff talk here. We understand, and that's why we're discussing, we understand your concern, absolutely, that's why it's being discussed. Please continue, Brad.
Well, I was going to say, the survey was sent out as part, part of the neighborhood meeting notice. There was a link in the letter that you could go to the website and give us feedback on, on your street and your opinions on the street. And so, that was, that was the survey that we sent out as part of the, the meeting notice.
Well, I, I will say this, this city is a bunch of hard charger, working twelve, fourteen-hour day people, that's obvious. I never see this many people here. I had my budget meeting, there was no one here for the last five years. So, you're, you're all working hard, I get that, and sometimes it's hard to communicate with you frankly. I had the person doing the, the, the sign-up sheet on Joliet, he just called me, he just threw up his hands. He couldn't, he couldn't get ahold of anybody. Nobody answers their door, no one's ever home, he can't, he couldn't get ahold of anybody, he threw up his hands to me. So, you know, our missing council member here tonight has a, has sort of a funny saying, he says, "Grant should be a home of the country, it should be, 'Welcome to Grant, they'll leave me alone.'" Because a lot of us moved out here because we want to be left alone a little bit, and we're looking for a little slice of paradise on our own, okay? So, you're very difficult to get ahold of, you folks. You need to know that. So, that's why we're here getting your feedback tonight, and it is not falling on deaf ears. Okay? So, we're just getting to the nub of this. Go.
And also, one other question, so, we said we had twelve residents respond to the survey. Kim or Brad, can you just kind of summarize those?
You know, I think most of them were just talking about the conditions of the road. I don't remember the specifics, but they were included in the feasibility report. I think the results of the survey was part of the feasibility report. And the feasibility report is posted on the website, so if people can go take a look at the eleven or twelve responses that were, that were filed.
Some of the people that bothered to respond were a little upset, so I don't think we'll be reading those.
And that's okay, Mayor.
And that's fine, so we need to hear.
There were four or five specific questions about cost, condition of their road, long-term vision for grant roads, and it was really good input, again, for those that did respond.
A lot of it was, was great, yeah, it was great, I'm glad they, they took the time to do it. Jeff, anything else?
I'd make, like, make a couple more comments about, I'm glad you kind of went through the math, so people can see that, you know, we're, number one, we're trying to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money, and it does cost money to maintain these roads. The money's got to come from somewhere, and we're doing our darned just to make sure that we have the best roads we can with the money that we have. And I know these assessments seem like a lot, but compared to what it would cost if we don't do this, compared to what we would have to do with taxes if we don't do this, it's something for the, that I want the citizens to really be aware of, that we're not just, you know, willy-nilly trying to impose road projects on them that's going to cost them money without being real well thought out, so.
Thank you, John. Mr. Carr?
You know, this is a pretty large, pretty large project, and twelve or thirteen thousand dollars is serious money for any of us living here. I do think, after listening to the last number of meetings here, that our engineering staff, Brad's done a good job, feasibility study came in, I am confident that while many of you have asked, "Is there a different way to do this, or a cheaper way to do this?", at some point, going cheaper is not the best value. Having said that, it's, it's a yes or no, we'll, we'll see whether it goes forward.
All right. I'm going to jump into a couple of things here. We had one person come up and say, "You know what, I'd rather pay that assessment upfront to four percent." And I just want to talk money for a minute, okay? It's four percent, I don't want to pay that four percent. And I'm not a money manager, so don't take anything that I say as financial advice, but I can get a lot more than four percent in the stock market in a 500 fund, it would be pretty simple to get more than four percent on that. Just saying, you can do it. So, the, the point is, I, I mean, for me, I, I would, I would end up paying the assessment if, if this goes through. Two, you know, we have these choices to make up here. The reason that I, I went through all those numbers and those tax amounts upfront was because you can tell us, all of you can tell us, come to the budget meeting, August 2020, and say, "You know what, I don't want to be assessed anymore, I never want to be surprised or, or not know that an assessment's coming." In other words, I want the city to pay for it. Well, again, look to your right and left, that's the city, okay? So, if you want your taxes raised to the point where this city can put more, much more money toward these assessments than, than we are right now, because we are putting money toward these assessments, money that's not going to be spent on the maintenance of these roads over the next couple of years, is being built right into this project, okay? So, there's money being in there, but you have these choices to make, and you need to tell us whether or not assessments are the way to go, or whether or not higher taxes on a yearly basis. I can, we can take more money each year, or we can come to you every twenty-five or thirty years and say, "Hey, the road needs to be done." You need to tell us, are you going to make a decision here? You get two choices to make here, we're all ears. August 2020 is our next budget meeting. I hope you're all here to tell me what to do, because I'm looking for orders. Hang on, let me keep going here. Options. Couple of you came forward and said, "You know, I haven't heard enough options." I love, many of you know I live on Joliet. Joliet has heavy truck traffic. Every time a truck is going from Highway 96, the county or the state road, soon to maybe be county, hopefully not, but state road, north up into any of these neighborhoods, it's coming up Joliet. Brad has, our engineer, has talked about doing a nine-ton, if I'm not mistaken. There are classes of roads, and they can be designed differently, more, more, more base, more, more hard coat, whatever, more macadam, on there in order to create a nine-ton road versus a seven-ton road, okay? And I've heard people say, and I've got some emails that say, "Wait a second, you're living on Joliet, and your road's going to be a nine-ton road. That's going to be a more expensive road than any of these other roads that are being placed up in the Woodland Acres or in other places up there." You're right, yeah, absolutely, it's going to cost more to do it. Doesn't make it any more fun for me to drive on, I don't think, but yeah, it's a little bit heavy-duty road. Why would we do that? So that we don't have to have assessments later on. But, in terms of options, we've got, Brad, I'm going to ask you a question real quick, and you might not even be able to answer this, because you weren't in charge of the engineering at the time, but you do have the feasibility study to rely upon, would you call Joliet a ten-ton road right now, a seven-ton or a nine-ton road, now, the way it sits? The way it was designed when they put it in?
I would say it's a substandard nine-ton road.
It's a substandard?
Less than, I don't know what it is, right? It's less than what it should be.
It's less than what it should be. It would be fair to then call it a seven-ton road in its initial inception, when it was put down, it was probably a strong seven-ton road. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's, that's fair based on the forensic reports that we've seen for the pavement thickness.
Okay. I'm hearing over and over again that, yeah, I'm in favor of this, something needs to be done, we need to change our roads, we need to do something. You know the financial analysis behind this. I'll email back and forth to any person in this room, over and over, and then financial analysis, let me know, shoot me an email. But the money is the money, we've got to get something done on some of these roads, and if Joliet needs to be seven-ton in order to equal the expense of the other roads, that is a feeder road on county maps. Joliet is a feeder road, okay? It feeds those neighborhoods, y'all use it. I use it, y'all use it. And one lady said two-thirds, I think it's more like three-quarter. So, you know, having that as an option moving forward, I think is something that should be explored, and that I hear over and over. A seven-ton road is not going to hurt us there. Couple other things here. The, a couple of people brought up other things, and I just want to clarify a few things so that I understand them better, maybe even more than you. Once this project is awarded, we go out for bids completely public. You guys, you can each individually get the bid package if you like, okay? You could, you could, you could look at that big package online, you can look at who's bidding on it, you can look at the costs, and they're all going to be rather large companies, obviously. We're talking about 5.1 miles of roads. You're going to need, you know, to be a big company and handle that. But that is all completely and totally public information, over a hundred thousand dollars, completely public. The assessment hearing, we actually have a hearing. When the assessment's done, and we know the actual costs are going to be going out to each individual homeowner, a, a couple of people had brought up, "Well, there's this lot, and there's this lot, we're not sure about this park," and a city-owned lot. This analysis takes place moving forward, that analysis is not done yet. We, we don't pretend to say that analysis is done yet. That analysis takes place before that assessment hearing, so that when that assessment hearing happens, we have all the latest information. There are no more costs coming forward, we know exactly what we're dealing with. And then that assessment hearing takes place, and you tell us what you think of that assessment. One other thing I want to bring up, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable tonight. I'm being assessed twelve thousand dollars like everybody else, okay? Councilman Carr is also on Joliet, so he'll be assessed the twelve-eight like everybody else, or whatever it turns to be if we look at different options. So, it would be really nice to have Mr. Carr here tonight, I'm sorry that he isn't, I don't know if he's ill or what's happening with Mr. Carr, but it would have been nice to have him here tonight. Kim, do you have any other further questions, because I have, or further things you want to point out, because I have a couple of questions for you just on process, but do you have anything else you want to say?
I have nothing else to add.
Okay. If, if, for example, and I, I don't mean to speak for the council, I'm speaking for myself at this point, if I wanted to explore other options with Brad, and to perhaps have some other things laid out, for example, a seven-ton road on Joliet. And some of those roads, as we've heard, some of the residents sure seem to think those are in pretty good shape and probably could just handle an overlay, if that. If we wanted to explore those questions, how would you suggest we do that procedurally? Because you're the procedural maven here, that you're the expert. Would you table this, what would you do?
Mayor and council members, I would recommend the action that is listed out on your agenda to be tabled.
Okay.
I would then give staff very clear direction as to what information you want back, what numbers you want back, to the next council meeting when this action item is before you again.
Okay. Well, I think that is a, is a good conservative move, because as I've made clear to a lot of folks on emailing over the phone, I don't think that we're on a stopwatch here. This road isn't changing this winter. We're all going to have to drive nice and slow on it, and the pile's going to rip chunks out of it, and we're going to have to go slow. So, there's nothing to be done yet this winter, we're not on a stopwatch. Our, our report from Brad is good, our feasibility report from Brad is good for a full three years. I'm not saying we're waiting three years, that's not my point. My point is we're not on some sort of a stopwatch where we have to jump on this. I would like to see other options. I'd like to take a look at maybe at some of these other roads, I wasn't aware of those other roads. That's my perspective. Mr. Rog, what are you, what are your thoughts on this?
I, I will have to agree, I think we, I would like to see some other options. Like you said, some people think the road is good, and maybe an overlay is all they need. But I think we should, we should table this and do a little bit more research to see if we can do some more.
I guess, Mr. Mayor and council members, and what I mean by, when you say options, that's what I mean about clear direction to staff. What options are you looking for Brad to come back with?
Yeah, but you want it tabled first and then options?
Yes, absolutely.
Right. And we're not, we're not explaining options to Brad right now. Dave, did you have something to say, or Brad?
Well, I was just, just going to add, would it be better to continue the, the public hearing, David, or?
Public hearing's already been closed.
It's already closed, yeah. We, I know where they're standing right now, and I've heard enough on email.
I guess procedurally, maybe you can help with the 429 process and, if we were to make some changes to, or add some different options, or?
The recommendation, if the desire is to, to have it, have it tabled with the direction from council to engage in some more value engineering and some more scrutiny of costs and options, I think probably the recommendation will later be to council that you just renotice the improvement hearing again, as you've done tonight. You wouldn't be obliged to do that, but just from a belt-and-suspenders standpoint.
Yeah, no, I, I have no problem with that. People want to come back and talk about the options, if we're able to explore other options, like you say, I think that value engineering, I wish I'd have thought of that. We look at some value engineering processes and perhaps look at some of these different areas and see whether or not we can come up with, with a better value, perceived value for, for residents, I think is important.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm just going to add to that, just to be aware, and I think more importantly for the residents to be aware?
Please.
Value engineering is great, renoticing a public hearing is great, there are costs to that. Every time the city does that, to come back with more options, the costs for this project go up. And again, I'm not saying it's, it's not a value not to do this and explore, but even just republishing a, a public hearing.
No, I, I understand. I sign the checks, I know exactly what you're saying. I see those checks, I see those checks to put in the newspaper, I see all this stuff. And with our budget, when we're talking about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars of a levied amount of one million, two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars, that hundred-and-fifty-dollar check that I signed to the newspaper, I look at it. I look at it. So, those costs are important. On the other hand, this is 5.1 miles of a city with thirty-three paved miles in it, it's significant. At 1.9 million dollars, it's the largest project this council's ever voted for. So, the things that I'm hearing out there in terms of options and in terms of just exploring it a little bit more, and, and, and a lot of these folks have kind of jogged my thought process as well, and not in a bad way, in a good way. And, and I think that exploring it is a good thing, from my perspective, and it sounds like these two gentlemen are in agreement. Are you in agreement with that, or? Okay, Mr. Carr?
I would be in favor of tabling this as well. And in terms of direction to Brad, maybe we take a second look at the very small roads.
We'll do that after we table it. Yeah, we're going to table it first, and then we're going to come back to that, okay?
All right, then, then maybe I'll just throw a couple of numbers out for the citizens. While we lived in Grant here, we owned a small townhouse in Montomedi, valued at half the value of the home in Grant, half the value. City of Montomedi took in three times the money that the city of Grant took in on a piece of property with twice the value. And it's, I didn't, I only throw that out there as the monthly figure thrown around was about a hundred-and-fifty bucks a month, over a ten-year, so it's something to relate it to, that's all.
Yeah, I want to make a comment along that line, too. A couple of comments we received was comparing us to Delwood. Why does Delwood pay this amount? Well, Delwood doesn't have near the amount of roads that we do, and the way Mayor Hewer explained the math, it should be pretty clear, if you try to apply that same math to Delwood, it's apples to oranges, so.
Yeah, it's, it's completely, yeah, facetious reasoning, frankly. Gentlemen, it sounds as though, yeah, it sounds as though we are of one mind to table this, get more information from Brad, and then renotice this. So I'm going to go ahead and entertain a tabling motion.
Before we do that, I would just like to make one comment to the, we, this is good, because we, we heard a lot of public input, but I would encourage you guys to contact us via email, or just to, you know, make sure that your, your voice, because we didn't, we, we had kind of informal tally, whatever, probably weren't supposed to maybe do it that way, but the, the point is, we want to know how you guys feel, so we got a sense of that, you know, here tonight. But feel free to, to contact us directly, like some people have in absence, so just want to make sure that that door's open, and you guys take advantage of it.
Cityofgrant.us, click on Government, click on Council, our email address is our Cityofgrant.us, click on Government, click on Council. Our email addresses are right there, as well as our phone numbers.
Those email the phone record?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're listed on the website.
Yeah, F O I A those all day. I print them out all the time. So, looking for a tabling motion, gentlemen?
I'll soon move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of tabling this till next month and renotising, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's talk to Brad about the options that we want him to look at. Brad, we're going to pile on. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, here we go. Let's, um, it's, are some people going to be leaving now? Because we'll, we'll hold off, because we're going to be talking to Brad. If you want to take off, yeah, take off. We're just going to give them the options that you talked to us about. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
You want to take five minutes?
Yeah, let's take five minutes. Thanks, guys. Gentlemen, let's call it backdoor to Lisa. Tell us when you're ready to go.
Ready.
Ready. Fantastic. Thank you very much. Let's start.
Mayor and council members, may I interrupt for one minute, please?
Yes.
Make a comment. It has been quite a while since we have had a full room of people. And I would just like to commend the council on your listening skills, and keeping that, it was just a really good public hearing. You got good input, you had good questions. And like I said, we've had a roomful of people at, in recent history, that things got really out of hand, and it was not nice. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The people we had here tonight were gentlemen and, and ladies, and we appreciate the feedback that they gave us. And incredibly valuable for them to start giving us better marching orders. We need to know what we're supposed to do. There's only one place we can get those marching orders, and it's from you. So, come to the meetings, email us, call us, tell us what we should be doing, so that we can do what you want us to do. All right, let's move forward. Mr. Rog, we've talked about options. We just tabled our improvement order for the 2019 Street Improvement Project. I'm sure you have many thoughts on this. Can you give our engineer direction, or explore the issue with him, please?
So, Brad, you heard as much as everybody here at the table heard. What are your thoughts about some of the things that you heard about, you know, it was the Jody Court North, doesn't need anything? I mean, you were there. You courted it for six residents. You know, other residents thinking they may just need an overlay. What, you know, I know you, you've done your due diligence, and everything that you've done. But now, hearing what you heard, is there anything else that you're thinking of that prompted you?
You know, the only thing I could say is, it's, you know, the feasibility study included all of these streets, right?
Right.
And if you do have opposition, more than people that are in favor on Jody Court, as a council and mayor, you can decide to eliminate that roadway, if you choose. If, if you feel like you're getting a response from the public that, for that section, not, not section of road, I wouldn't do it by sections. I would do it by street.
Right.
If you're getting opposition from those folks, then you have the right to eliminate that as part of the project.
Is that part of the, is that the whole street that, that's the dead end there? Is that that whole?
Well, I think, I think it's Jody Court, and I think there was five or six parcels that are.
Yeah, little parcels, okay.
So, when we eliminate a section or a roadway, then we re-stir the pot, and we go through the mock assessment again.
What are, what are your thoughts on just everything that you heard, as far as different options and overlays?
You know, the-
You've said that if the base isn't good, or if the roadway isn't good, an overlay is just not going to last anyhow. But, what do you?
I just, I just know, from my experience, that a road that's subpar, meaning most of these roads only have an inch and a half of wear course. And I understand Jody Court probably has 20 vehicles a day, right? There's no, there's no vehicular traffic on that roadway that tells me when it's going to fail, right? I mean, we could certainly look at a situation like that again. And I, and I don't know, or I don't remember exactly what the pavement thickness was for that roadway, or even what the condition of that pavement is. If, if the pavement is structurally intact, we could do an overlay. But if it's such in bad condition, it doesn't pay. It, it's not worth the money. We, we did that, we've done that several places within the city, and they've held together fairly well. The one example I can think of is Keats, but it's already starting to show its wear. It's already starting to crack, you know? And I, and I'm guessing, probably in 10 years, you're going to see Keats Road back to the way it was before we did the overlay. Now, if you do a much intense mill, full-depth mill, remove the pavements, and doing the recommendations that we're talking about, I'm confident those roads, if we do the maintenance that we're talking about, and we've started to do that with 65th Street and Keswick, if you do the crack filling, and you do the seal coating strategically at times when the roads need it, those roads are going to last longer than 35 years, if you stay on it. I just, I know that for a fact. It's been proven. So, you, you, you can't turn your, you can't turn your back to these roads once we do them. I, I definitely would recommend we, we stay with the program. We do the crack repairs. Every two years, we do the seal coat, probably the first, within the first five or six years. Because once you do that seal coat, you're going to have that mat sealed up. And, and really what deteriorates the road is the freezing of the water, and getting in the cracks, right? And so, the quicker you can do the seal coats, the longer those roads are going to last. But we can certainly look at Jody Coolard Court again, or any other road segment that you want, to see if it would be a candidate for an overlay. But again, remember, the way we have the assessment policy written, is that it's a project basis, right?
Right.
We're looking at the entire project. So, even if we were to reduce Jody Court, or even, well, if we were to reduce it to an overlay, right, that's not going to significantly reduce the cost of this project. I mean, that roadway is probably 150 feet long with, with a cul-de-sac, right?
Right.
But it's, it's entirely up to the council, what they want to do.
John, let me interject for just a second here. We're talking about one road, because we had people from Jody, two folks from Jody came in and said, hey, it doesn't need it. One road.
Right.
There's other folks we haven't heard from. I would, I would really suggest, just as homework for all of us, that we find some time in the next, just couple days, because he needs to hear from us, I think, to drive this project area. Grab the map, and drive the project area. Because if there's another road in there that looks like it's overlay, we can certainly say to Brad, hey, Brad?
We're going to hit them all.
Is this an overlay candidate? Is this an overlay candidate? Is this an overlay candidate? So that some of those, we can get your professional opinion on them. And you're right, this one with 150 feet ain't going to matter. Six, seven, eight, nine of them, a mile, that's going to start to matter.
So, I can tell you that Justin Trail is not a good candidate for an overlay. Joliet is not a good candidate.
Okay, but let's not, obviously, obviously. Okay, let's not go there and list out each road. Let us do our homework. We'll come back to you, okay?
Yep.
Through an email process, and ask you about these certain roads. You can just take a look at your feasibility, and say, no, it isn't, that isn't going to happen. It's just, we're, we're trying to find these options, where we're going to try to save some money on some of the stuff. And I think us doing the homework of driving them, probably is a great first step.
Okay.
Okay? Because I have driven all of them. I've driven a lot of them, but not all of them.
Yep, that's fair enough.
John, please continue.
Yeah, and, and that being said, you know, I don't know if it's clear, from what I was hearing tonight from the people, that if their street is overlaid, that their costs are not going to go down proportionally.
Significantly.
You know what I mean? And so, I don't think they realize that-
The only way they win is if they're, they're not touched.
They're not the project.
And then if, excuse me for interrupting, correct me if I'm wrong, let's say they, that's taken out of the mix. When it does need something, and it's only six of them, it's going to be ugly, money-wise, is it not?
Yeah, they're going to have to pay for the entire.
You're going to divide them by six now, instead of 150.
Be careful what you wish.
Well, yeah, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, as Brad started out saying, well, you can, you know, you guys can go ahead and eliminate Jody Court from this process. And that's, that's your, it's, it's our, our power to do so. But there's a definite downside to that moving forward, right?
For sure.
Because if you need it, then.
And you certainly, Mayor, if I don't, if you don't mind, you certainly can provide me guidance on the pavement thickness, too. Like we've talked about, Joliet is the only one that we're, you know, doing a little thicker, petunias. But if you, as a council or mayor, feel like that-
For now. Yep, for now. I'll get to that in my comments. Yep.
In the best interest of the city, that you could certainly recommend that all the pavements are the same thickness.
Yep. We could do that, too. John, do you want to keep going?
Uh, no. You know, it's, it's-
Kim?
I'm sorry, Mayor and council members, I am just going to add, because I've been in this situation. You guys are making some tough decisions. I have been assessed for my road. What the city engineer is, is the information he's giving you is based on engineering and the shape of the road. Yes, you have every right to take areas out of this, which is going to make the overall project cost more for the people that are still involved in this. But when I was assessed for my road, I look out, I get the letter, the improvements being made, because the road is shot. And I'm looking at the road going, there's nothing wrong with my road. I have no problem with my road. From the engineering perspective, and the cores in the road, and the materials in the road, and the way it was constructed to begin with, and the wear and tear on the road, no, it's not. The road is in bad shape.
So, we can't, what you're saying is, we can only make a, we can't make a full professional assessment based on driving it, but we can-
You can point it out.
What I, you can certainly drive the road. What I am saying is, the city engineer has already made his recommendation, based on what should be done, based on the shape of those roads. You have every right to take certain areas out.
We have every right to either take cer- certain areas out, or as Brad just suggested, we can take Joliet from a nine-ton road by design, and bring it back down to, or at least recommend that the overlay be the same depth as the other roads in the project, so that we have an equality of work being done across the project. I think that, from my perspective, is important.
You may have to do that.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
We may have to do that. And do I, do I understand the engineering necessity of a nine-ton road? Like I said, every heavy truck going to those neighborhoods goes up Joliet. I get it. It's just-
It's not even the weight of the truck, it's the amount of traffic.
The amount of traffic. It's the amount of traffic.
It's the volume of traffic.
Yeah, we're jumping ahead. Kiefer?
So, no, my thoughts were centered around Jody and Joliet as well. My first response is like, okay, well, you know, if they don't...if Jody doesn't want to be excluded, well, then I almost think we have some sort of duty to not really necessarily say them for themselves, but make sure they understand the full picture of what that would cost. And I think you brought up a good point, or someone did here, like, okay, if you're going to exclude yourself from this project, two years...you try to kick the can down...two years down the road, now you're going to be solely the six of you divvying up, and it's going to cost this much more. And then not to mention, like, what it's going to cost the city overall if we don't do anything, i.e., we have to take a dump truck full of asphalt in there to patch potholes and stuff. So, you know, maybe Brad, if you could kind of center some scenarios around that. And then regarding Joliet, I kind of tend to agree. I mean, I think engineering-wise, I think it makes sense to have it be a nine-inch road. But from an optics perspective, from, you know, the perception of fairness and all this stuff, we might have to cut off our hand to save our arm in that one. Is there any way that we could have any reasonable estimates in difference of longer-term cost if we do seven-inch versus nine-inch? Or is that something that we can't say, okay, well, if we do seven-inch, we know we're going to incur this much more additional maintenance down the road? Or is that somewhat subjective? Do you see where I'm getting at, where...
Yeah, so I...just because of the traffic volume, you know, all of these roads, if they're maintained properly, are going to last the same length. Now, if you look at the existing pavement thicknesses, it looks like, for the most part, this whole neighborhood was the same, right? It was all less than two inches. So they didn't give any credence to whether or not Joliet was a collector's street or not. They just paved, and I'm assuming it was all done at the same time or within a year or two. It was paved at the same time. And so I'm saying is, is Joliet probably, just looking at it, deteriorated quicker than the other streets just because of the amount of traffic. And so if we do add a little thicker bituminous to it, I feel confident that it'll last the same length as the other streets that are just getting two and a half inches.
Got you.
Yeah. I don't have any studies that would show me that that's the case, but I just know maintenance is the biggest driver in the life cycle of your streets. And I mean, making sure that you're doing that to make them last as long as possible.
Let me jump in for just a second. When we're in...when we're giving Brad direction here, we need to be very careful that we're not straying into politics and we're not straying into the job that we have of informing people in terms of value and that type of thing. I'm really looking for Brad to say, this is what this costs, this is what this costs, this is what this costs. If you go here, it'll last this long. You go here, it'll last this long. You go here, it'll last this long. When we start talking about some of these things, well, it'll last this long, it'll do this, it'll do this, this is fair, cutting off our arm to spite our nose, whatever, that's politics.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay? So I really want Brad to come back to us from my perspective and tell me what it's going to...what it's going to save us if the entire project quality is the same. Joliet is not a nine-ton road, it's a seven-ton road, like everything else. It lasted 25 years. And let me delve into politics for a second here. Grant is a very tribal place, if you will. The people that live up in that 103rd and up in those little neighborhoods and those tiny little cul-de-sacs, they identify with each other, and I get that. And the folks on Joliet that deal with the traffic, we identify a little bit with each other, because we are kind of a little bit out...Rogg, he lives up in the wilderness somewhere. I don't care what atmosphere it is, we're just kidding, John. But the point is, they're a little bit tribal. So, you know, having it be a fair and equitable treatment of all of those roads, if they're going to be involved in a project this big, I think is important. We know that thing's going to last 25 years. We know we're doing better maintenance. The maintenance matrix that you put together for us, we know it's better than it's ever been, okay? It's never been better than the maintenance matrix you put together, and we've been funding it faithfully. So I think that a quality of treatment there is important. I still want everyone to drive around and take a look at this. We need a little bit better firsthand knowledge. I haven't done all of it. I didn't go up to Granada. I've driven it before, and it's a mess, but I didn't go all the way up there. But I drove most of this here. So I think it's important that we do that. I would like to see an estimate of what we would drop our cost to if we were to keep Joliet at that...that equality of project.
Sure.
I would like to, from my perspective, try to find larger areas, Brad, where you think...and if I understand correctly, let me get engineering for a second. You've got standard overlay. I'm throwing some hot top across a road that's already sitting there. Standard overlay, right? Option one. Second option, a mill down to the gravel base and then relay. There's nothing between those two.
Right, so...
There is no treatment between those two, Brad. So it's either I overlay or I mill down to the gravel and I relay.
Basically, you're removing the bituminous.
I got you.
Yep.
You're going down the gravel and you're overlaying. I didn't know whether or not there was an option between those two, where you could grind off half the...perhaps half of the asphalt and then lay on top of it so it had a better bind or something. I mean, just trying to explore the question here.
Potentially, there's products you can put into the aggregate to strengthen structurally the aggregate base so that you could lessen the thickness of the bituminous. But those products, I wouldn't recommend. They're not going to last nearly as long. Let me just add something, too, a little bit about Joliet and the way the cost of Joliet compared to a full-depth mill and overlay. When you're doing a reclaim project, typically you're generating more material than what the existing bituminous was placed on top. So basically, you're regenerating all the material, including the bituminous, and you're raising the road.
You're peaking it, yeah.
So when you raise the road, there's a lot more peripheral impacts to driveways and ditches and things like that. It's not just the fact that we're adding a half of inch of bituminous to Joliet. It's because we're reclaiming. If we were to just take it down to milling off...
Base, yeah.
The base, just like everything else.
Keep it with project quality, yeah.
We could get to the equality question.
Yeah.
And if you wanted to, I could certainly subtract out the half inch of bituminous. But again...
Yeah, what I'm asking...
I'm not sure that I would recommend that, but I think...
And I understand that.
But I really think the additional...most of the additional cost, probably half, half of it's in the bituminous, half of it's in this peripheral...
Little work.
Work that has to take place because you're not removing the material. Alls you're doing is reshaping it and building it up higher and so that you have to do more work on the driveways.
Yeah, there's driveways, you've got to bring them up. So let's stop there for a second. I understand that process now. And what I am asking you to do is give us a cost with just the mill and overlay, not the reclamation on Joliet. The mill and overlay, so you're doing exactly the same process as you're doing on the rest of the roads.
Sounds good.
In order to equalize the costs of these. That's what I'm asking you for. Is there anything...I've got you here, and I'm going to ask, what else would you do to bring down the cost of this project? Is there anything else you can think of?
No.
Nothing else?
I mean, we're at the bare bones.
Okay, okay.
Right? So what I've told folks, I think I...you know, a couple of residents have emailed me, and they're concerned about the soft costs, right? Everybody's worried about the engineering costs. And so the last two projects that we've done, 65th Street and Keswick, they came in at 12 to 16 percent. In the feasibility report, we have 20 percent. So I know I'm conservative, right? And so part of that soft cost is, in this bigger project, is going to be the bonding costs, which we typically haven't had.
Right.
So I think it's going to be a little more than the 65th Street or the Keswick project, but I don't think it's going to be the 20 percent. And people aren't quite...they don't understand that we're going to be engineering this from bidding or producing the plans and bidding all the way through construction. People just think that I'm going to go away after the award, and actually, the most important work happens during construction and doing the inspections and doing the material testing so that we make sure that we're getting the product that we want.
Yeah, you don't need to defend that to me. I understand that, that it's vital, the engineering, so that you get the finished product that you were promised, as well as making sure that that bidding takes place. Obviously, we've had problems with that before. We've had people claim we had to bid out everything from, you know, everything from our electricity bill to other things. Kim?
Mayor, council members, I was just going to add that the engineering costs, and yes, he said they were very soft, but he was being very conservative. We know very well in the city, costs coming in higher than what you state, or coming in lower is a good thing in Grant. You don't want to come in higher. I'm not sure what all the administrative costs related to, but I know that those will come in lower.
Yeah, okay.
And they were part of that full project cost.
And that, you know, that...I wish I could...well, I'm on camera right now. I wish I could reassure people that that is, in fact, the case, but in...at the risk of not being conservative, I won't do that. The 12-8 is the 12-8. I'm not counting on writing a check for 12-8, but hey, 12-8 is the 12-8. But from my perspective, Brad, I want to see Joliet brought down to overall project quality. I want the rest of the council, from my perspective again, to do some homework, drive some of these roads, and ask questions of Brad. Brad, he'll pull out that thing and he'll ask the questions, and you guys are all going to have good, tough questions for him, and he's just the guy to, you know, bat them back at you. Kim?
I'm sorry, I will also note that feasibility study, all of you have one.
Hmm?
You can link that stuff up, and it's also posted on the website for residents.
And I've gone all the way through it, and the cores are great. But the cores tell a story to him. What tells a story to me is driving the road. So that's what I need to do. And from my perspective, I'm not giving anybody homework, it's up to you guys. That's what I'm going to do. So, Denny?
I think I said enough when I was interrupting everybody. No, I...we beat it all up.
Okay. Brad, you know what we're looking for.
Yep.
You've heard our residents. We are trying to come up with different options to equalize this cost if possible, to get this cost down as low as we can. It's a big bill. 12-8 is, like Denny said, a serious change in anybody's purse. So we want to get it down as low as we can. Even though we can reduce it to $136 a month, which is, I think, what you said, that's still 136 bucks a month. It's five pizzas and dance lessons, you know?
I get it.
So we're talking about Joe...there is a reason why the nine-ton, and I said inch before, I apologize, but the reason why the nine-ton recommendation was made. And I get that, you know, we're going to try to see what the cost would be if we made equitable to other roads, but if we do a seven-ton road now, how much more cost will we have...and you might not be able to answer this, but if you can, I want you to try to come up with something like, how much more cost would it be because we made it seven-ton now and so the original nine-ton...
Well, here's what I could...here's what I would propose to do, that we could do a fair equitable...equity.
We know what you mean.
Easy for you to say.
Thank you. Do everything like a mill and overlay with the same pavement thickness. And then we could do everything as a mill and overlay with a three-inch bituminous on Joliet, right? So then you could decide whether or not...it would still be a nine-ton road.
And that's where we get into the politics, where we start talking to folks about the value of that, so that lasts the same length, as Brad has made clear, lasts the same length as those neighborhood roads, right?
Yeah, the seven-ton roads.
I'm just afraid because of the vehicle traffic.
No.
If you put less bituminous on Joliet, that it's not going to stand up like the other roads will over time.
And we can see the results of that right now. With the amount of patching that we have on Joliet, it's obvious, you're not talking out of your hat, it's obvious Joliet has taken a much bigger beating, and it's the traffic counts and the weights of the trucks. Sorry, they bust up the road more, you know, that's why they're weight limited. But the counterpoint to that is, if 30 years were back out again, Joliet's been patched up, it's starting with more bituminous anyway. We know that. It's starting with a better road anyway. So will it last as long as those less-traveled roads? No. So we're back to this point in 30 years? I'm okay with that. From a homeowner perspective and me writing the check perspective, I'm okay with that. I think I'd probably get wide agreement in the audience if I were to say that. Okay? Other thoughts, gentlemen? Other directions? Should we move on? We good?
We're good.
Good? John, Jeff?
Good.
You got marching orders, Brad, and I'll be out driving the streets and bugging them, probably not too much, because I'll have that feasibility report with me while I do it. And so I'll drive the street, pull up the feasibility report, read that, and then I probably won't even bother you. But might be one or two...
I'm going to go by his house.
Yeah, lots, yeah. Do that a lot. We're going to move on, gentlemen. City Planner Jennifer Ascamp is not with us tonight, as she has no action items. Our City Attorney Dave Schunder is with us but has no action items. Is there any new business we'd like to discuss? No, we'll go over that. Unfinished business, seven missed points. Discussion items, no action will be taken, but staff updates. Kim points, any updates for us?
Mayor, council, I have nothing this evening.
Brad, any updates other than what we've discussed here?
I do not have anything, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Schneider?
No updates, thank you.
Our esteemed treasure, Sharon?
No updates.
Nothing, excellent. Let's move on. City Council reports and future agenda items, no action taken again. With all the rain we've had, we have certain areas in this city where the ponds are approaching the road surface. We also have areas that are subject to flooding and are known to be subject to flooding, like our Sunnybrook areas. I am asking all of you out there to take preventative action. Do not wait for someone to come and rescue. You're always your first responder. Throw some sandbags out there, get some of this stuff done. When you're going past these ponds at night and it's been raining, make sure they're not over that road and you run into an unexpected situation. So there's going to be some hazards out there with all this rain. Please take care. Two, the gentleman in the audience reminded me again today, so I'm going to remind you all again, we've got bunches of families moving into the city as our retired people tend to downsize. So more families in the houses that we have, we have a census coming up. It is vitally important that you report all those little kiddos. Everybody's there. If, you know, the mother-in-law's living in one bedroom, we want to know that, too, because she's a resident. So we want to make sure that we're reporting everyone if we can get to 5,000 population. Much of what we talked about tonight will become basically moot because we'll have our gas tax money back.
Amen.
Who would like to read our community calendar for October 2nd through October 31st?
I would love to.
Fantastic.
The Matamita Public Schools Board Meetings will be on Thursday, October 10th and Thursday, October 24th at what is known as the esteemed DO, the District Education Office, and it will be at 7:00 p.m. Stillwater Public Schools Board Meeting is Thursday, October 10th at the Stillwater City Hall, 7:00 p.m. Washington County Commissioners Meeting is Tuesday at the Government Center, 9:00 a.m. And I would move...
Very nice.
Thank you. We adjourn.
Mayor, council members, I will remind you that your November meeting is Monday, November 4th...
Correct, thank you.
...as close to the 5th because of the elections that are...
Election, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, we have a first on the floor for an adjournment. Do I have a second?
Very good.
Very good. All those in favor of adjournments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.